Good morning, everybody. It is Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five. My name's Don Swinker. I'm gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Stein. To my right, I have Nen Playmark, Bjorn from IT, Lisa from the Auditor's Office, Luann's over in the corner, the Executive Assistant. Um, we have Brittany from the press and first up today would be Jaden Shekel from the County Engineers Office. Good morning, everybody. Morning.
Morning. Uh, on our agenda, we have on there for take action on personnel for operator two hiring out of the Bellevue Sheds. So, um, month and a half ago, around the timeframe, our Bellevue motor grader operator resigned. Uh, internally, nobody internally, uh, spoke any interest or submitted an application for it. So then went out to the public, so received applications, did interviews. And from that, we extended the offer to, uh, Kevin Driscoll. And he had accepted and he's passed all his pre-employment screenings, all that stuff. So, uh, we have, his start date would be July seventeenth, which would be next Thursday. So I guess just looking for approval for the hiring of, uh, Kevin Driscoll. On, it's an issue by weekly checks at the same. Is that how that's typically ordered?
So you need a motion to approve the hiring of Kevin Driscoll as operator two motor grader operator at the Bellevue Shop. At twenty-six seventy-one per hour and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue bi-weekly paychecks effective July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Bingo. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to do what Lisa said, hiring Kevin Driscoll starting July seventeenth. At twenty-six seventy-one per hour as an operator two motor grader operator in the Bellevue Shed. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
That's all I have on this or for this week. Um, construction updates. Nothing's changed because we haven't, or most of our construction's done, just waiting for day labors to start in the fall. Um, reclaim with the rain going right now is obviously on hold. Uh.
Which is a nice problem to have.
Yeah, cuz especially as it relates to like the Bellevue motor grader, we haven't had that position filled and the reclaim's been taken off some of our guys. Some of our roads, they're probably in need of some blading and, uh, some dressing up. So it gives time to do some of that. So rain is welcome, yes. At least in my, my view it is. Um.
Oh, again, I, you know, I understand you hire the best operator that had the most experience, dah 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 dah. Is there a training program for such? Um, I understand also that there's not a buddy seat really, that.
There's not.
Let him go and say, here, train here, or do, do, you know, your John Deere's, your caterpillars, do they have proving grounds? That you can go to for a day and get some instruction, or is it, is it learn?
Learning by doing is probably the best. So I've talked to Rick about it. Um, we'll obviously have Kevin work with, uh, Brad in the Bellevue Shop since he was the motor grader operator out there for so long. And maybe have one of the other, one of our other operators that's been in the motor grader for a long time, you know. Cuz it, everybody does things a little bit differently, but where we can at least take some of our more experienced operators where they can give him tips and tricks, I guess, or how they do it. And but still gonna take him just doing out there, blading, just to get the field machine and to know. So yes, we've talked about the best thing is, say on day one or day two, cuz day one's gonna be getting everything assigned to him, all that. But when he first starts, have Brad work with him. Okay, this is how you do some of this. Let him start blading then in the morning and then maybe at lunchtime he falls up with them or checks on period, but morning, how was it going? Or follows him for a little bit to see how he's doing, just the extra, like you said, there is no place he would, he can sit there side by side with him. It's just gonna have to follow him or let him do it and then he drives down the roads later and work with him that way.
Anything else going on?
We're still reclaiming, all right? Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. So I guess I misspoke last week. They did run a little bit last week. I was not aware of that. I thought they pulled the pin, but they were reclaiming in, up towards the, uh, Walnot area. And but today they are not. Think they were trying to get everything touched up before the rains morning from what they were doing yesterday. And I do know there's like, we're gonna start to have to move the guys for reclaim down south. Because some of the quarries that we had planned for on north do not have the rock available. Like, for example, uh, we call it the Bush Quarry up by Centerville or Saint Anatus that is running or doesn't have enough rock available. Uh, the Roland Quarry, which is on two-sixteenth street, which was originally was a Wendling Quarry, but they did not. They were not, Wendling was not crushing, but since then Bard has transferred over and Bard intends to start crushing there, but haven't yet. So we're gonna have to kind of move around to where the quarries have rock to keep it long or shorter haul distances versus long hauling it. Uh, so we're kind of moving where the quarries are crushing.
That first where you talked about, are they planning on crushing there at all or up by?
Yeah, yeah. I, and I think they, uh, they moved over to their, Bard moved over to the Bellevue. I think they called the Bellevue Farm Road by the Bellevue Golf Course to start.
They got a pile of stuff down there.
Yeah, the, so then I don't know if they're moving. Do they also have, I'd have to talk, I can't keep straight on. What, what supplier has what quarries that's changed as it seems like on a quarterly basis? But like, I don't know, I know they've been lately hauling out of, uh, what quarry, I've drawn a blank on the name.
Rowan?
No. Did the Smalls Quarry maybe off of Mill Creek?
Yeah.
And then I think also out of Deckers, I believe. I know that Rich and the guys have been keeping tabs with Bard and Wendling respectively.
Respectively, like you said, we're, we're working wherever we can get rock. Is that coincide with the plan you had to start with of which roads we were doing?
No, not really, just cuz we don't, you know, they, they crush for more than just us. They're not gonna dictate their schedule based on.
Yeah, I get it, but I mean, we have, we kind of dictated the roads we were, that were priority to us because either road traffic or because of the shape or condition of them. So I'd like to follow that somewhat cuz they were a priority, I think, when we designated them.
Yeah, we're still at the mercy of wherever, well, I mean, we have so many miles in each area, it's just we gotta move around to wherever they start crushing cuz if they don't have rock available.
I mean, we're pretty fortunate to have excellent of quarries in the county to begin with. So I mean, if we do have to travel a little farther, I still think that'd be kind of.
They do think in the long, in the not too far future, we're gonna have to look at contract hauling. Where, where they haul the rock cuz they have larger trucks and they can, um, haul the rock to us when we need it. And frees our guys up to go maintain other things. Something we're gonna eventually look at.
But something we can definitely look at. All right. Thank you very much, Jayden.
Yep, thank you.
Next up, we got visitors and citizens or anybody online or here today. I don't see anybody online but us. And, uh, I don't see anybody here that wants to talk visitors and citizens, so we'll move on to Kathy Cundy, Jackson County Senior Center Board. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello. Just wanted to, um, give updates for the center. First of all, in the spring, we had, um, applied for the Keep it Iowa Beautiful grant for the, for paint for the center. And we received, um, a ten, ten gallon, um, grant for that. Um, after meeting, um, the senior center board, we met last week and we decided to give those ten gallons of paint back only because we didn't wanna use it. We renovate, we're gonna paint over and we felt that there were probably other entities out there that probably needed that paint. So I had called and, um, we, um, did, gave that back and they said, thank you for calling and please apply again next year. So when we get closer to needing paint in the process, they said, please apply back again. So just wanted to let you know that we gave that back and felt comfortable doing that and we'll just reapply when it comes time.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Um, another thing is, um, we've had, we're trying to raise money for the, our part of the renovation. Um, we had two successful, um, parties. We had the Lual Party, the Ice Cream Social Car Show. Car Show kind of got rained out, but we had a great attendance at both. And so we continue to, we're gonna continue to try and raise funds, come up with ideas. Um, we've had, um, quite a few donations already. Um, and so we have set, the senior has set our goal at to try and raise thirty thousand. Um, just for the fifteen for, for the grant, but yet we know that over above we'll need a lot of kitchen utensils, supplies, tables. Um, things like that. So we're trying to think ahead of, um, raising our goal to that thirty. And hopefully over the next five years, maybe we can reach that goal and just something to work towards to let people know what's going on. Um, so any questions on any of that? We just wanted to let.
Well, I think fundraising thing's a great idea and I think it gets people involved, to be honest.
It does.
You have down there, I think you're, you're all moving in the right direction from what I hear. I mean, I was at the Lual, of course, like the rest of them, but, oh, it was, it was a great event. You had a great attendance and you had, uh, a lot of participation and I thought it was really nice. And but to get more involved, then to get more action and.
My question would be, the last I heard, we were trying to put together an RFP for an architect to kind of looks what we need to do for the grant. Where are we at with that?
So yeah, that's kind of why I came, I seen Kathy on the, uh, agenda.
Move a little closer, the microphones are up here if you don't mind.
Okay. That's why I came up. I seen Kathy on the agenda and I figured you guys haven't been updated for a while. I spent a good share of yesterday working on the RFPs, so I got a lot of notes. I just have to get it kind of put together so it looks more professional. Once I get that done, I'm gonna send it to you guys. I'll send it to Kelly Brown and, uh, and let everybody look at it. And then I think we'd be at the point probably of, I think the next part of the process would be hiring an architect, I think. And then after that, I don't know, I think we submit for the bid and then, or submit for the, the, uh. Yeah, the grant and then, then it goes out for bids. I believe that's the process.
If we, uh, obtain the grant, can we get reimbursed for the architect part of it?
I don't think so. I think the way Kelly told me that that can't be.
Remember how that was discussed.
That can't be part of the grant. That has to be, uh.
So the, so the RFP you're working on is to select the architect to do the work?
No, the RFP I'm working on is all the, all the work we wanna do.
Okay.
And then we would hand that to the architect, say, this is what we want, you know, they can look at it and make adjustments to it or whatever they need to. My thoughts, my hope is that it can be just about complete, that they can look at and say, yep, this is what we'd like to have their stamp on it and it's gonna go.
So, uh, and I understand completely that your knowledge is in what needs to be done and this is how and dah dah dah. But again, if you need, um, verbiage, I guess I would suggest the county attorney, Anna or Kelly or even.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've got lots of templates and stuff that I'm looking at. So yeah, I'll run it past everybody.
Can you have a list of architects you're looking at or?
We do not. I think that all, the way, I think that has to go through a whole process, you know, and I think there has to be public hearings. There has to be, you know, so that everybody has a chance to weigh in on it and then, you know, then it goes out to.
Maybe John, John, the county attorneys would have an idea exactly how that process is supposed to go, so.
Yeah, because I think it's like the old adage when, when the appraisal stuff and all that kind of stuff went down, you can't pick and choose anymore. You're like, you got hit, draw it out of the hat, basically, and say, yeah.
And I think, yeah, once that process starts, once the architect is picked and then once the grant is, is awarded, then it'll go to whoever's manage it. Who I think is Eastern Iowa, whatever, ECI, yeah. And then we're completely out of it. I mean, I don't think we're even supposed to show up at the job. I mean, it's a, so.
Okay.
But anyway, that's just a little update on that. I'm hoping by next meeting, like, like next week, that I'll have this stuff. Otherwise, within two weeks, I think I should have everything pretty well cut and dry and ready to go.
Cool. Let's keep the ball rolling.
Yep.
Yeah, we had, Jeff had given us a list of questions for the grant too. And so we have, I've got all those questions answered and, um, information that they need, I'm gonna give them that today. So our part of that should be complete unless you had more questions.
Keep up the good work down there and let's keep going with the grant. We appreciate what you got, what you're doing, Jeff. And so, yeah, it'll be exciting to see where we are, where we're at in the year.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Cool.
I just have one more.
Yeah.
Thing, unless you have any more questions for me. Okay. So we just want to, and the board had met again last week, not last week, a couple of weeks ago. And we had talked about, um, we had the five days a week that there's volunteers there. We have four volunteers. So every day there's like someone else and I think we're maxed out on our keys, maybe.
No, I think there's a couple more keys.
Is there a couple more? Okay, so we would like to ask if, and you just think about this, is to hire an employee for three hours a day, Monday through Friday, from nine to noon. Just to have more stability at the center, so people know like who they could ask, who they talk to, that person will be there every day. They know what is going on. So people do have questions. Um, and the other thing is too, is that, you know, if we do start the process, the renovation prop, there's that person there that have, that will be there, that knows the center. And will know to answer those questions as, as they arise, hopefully, instead of one person every day. It just seems to be, I think we could have more stability and people would feel better about, okay, we know that person is the manager of the center or that person is there. That's who we talk to. So I think it would just be a little bit easier. Um, and, and right now, you know, there's, if we don't have a certain person there that knows what outlets to, where to do this, what they can do. You know, if that person not there, they can't operate. So, um, so I think it would just be better to have one person. Um, is our thoughts.
So with that being said, are, are we budgeted for such a thing or for the next fiscal year?
No, no, we had just kind of come up with this and, um, I mean, we could do it for next year, but we just wanna put it out there that with the renovation starting, they're gonna have questions for someone. And, you know, sometimes it's just an easy question of where's this, where's that? If you could go to that one person and answer that question and be done and move things forward, I think would be a good idea.
I can appreciate that. And then on the other side of it is, you know, like Jeff said, they won't even let us be on the job site. Well, you know, we gotta find your own over, what we gotta do. But I mean, the point is, I'd like to have Jeff, my maintenance guy, involved because he's knowledgeable about construction and he, and he, you know, the more he knows about the center, the better it is. So I guess, you know, pending his time, I suppose, too, we'd only conflict with, but like when renovation goes on like that, I think hopefully he can spend a little more time too and then.
I think some of what they were talking about is even like people coming to bid to even just have a contact person to go down there, to be down there that. If I'm gonna look at doing flooring, you know.
Who do I talk to?
Who do I talk to? So that's their question. They're getting the same answer versus.
I don't know.
Monday Kathy's a volunteer, Tuesday Lisa is, and they're giving different answer, you know.
I, I completely agree with that, but I still think, you know, the maintenance or construction knowledge needs to be present, that kind of.
Right.
Well, these would just be simple questions that, you know, if he wasn't able to be there, you know, they would have some kind of.
Do you have a timeframe? You, you thought this would be helpful? I mean, or is this just kind of an ask to see if it's a possibility? Cuz it all boils down to me for, you know, finances, you know. Um, we're looking at with this grant, you know, we're gonna have our commitment, which was around forty to fifty thousand dollars plus. We're talking hiring an architect and different things, so.
We had city involved too.
Yeah, we got the city involved, we got the senior center involved, but there was still our part of the commitment to get to the twenty-five percent match.
So would your, um, fundraising efforts be a part of that? Maybe?
Um, well, we don't wanna hire the employee and have all the expenses that go with that. We just can't afford to have that, you know, to have that unemployment and paycheck, you know, all that. We, we don't have the funds.
I guess it's certainly something we would have to have on paper and look it over and look at the numbers.
The big thing would be, let's kind of get this grant kind of situated and see where, where the numbers are actually falling and stuff. And then from there, again, you know, hiring somebody would be great. I know the more stability, the more interaction, the more people will be there. But, you know, um, that's just, we gotta look at.
That's fine. I just wanted to kind of throw it out there as a proposal and that's what we're kind of thinking of. And just because they would be there from night to noon, most of the time people stay till one or two, you know, so they would have some volunteer hours probably after that or before that. A lot of people want to come in at eight-thirty or nine, so they're there to unlock right away anyway. So it was just a proposal that we were thinking about and I just wanted to throw it out there.
We appreciate it.
But things are going well.
Yeah, so we appreciate what you guys are doing and I thought, I think it's gaining momentum, if you will, and, uh, people getting active and interested.
Yeah, but we had the, um, Ice Cream Social, we had one of the, one of the questions were, um. What would, where do you see the center going? So we've made up a survey and we have those people answer and we had some good feedback back from that. And then, um, when we explained what we were doing the survey for, they really all got into it and I had a lot of answers and we have a lot of ideas. So that really, that really helps. So I think people are getting to know what's hopefully gonna happen and being there with it.
Okay. Cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. In two things.
All right.
I wanna yield my time.
Okay. Andrew and, uh, Virginia, you guys, come on up.
Call your agendas.
Morning.
Good morning.
Don't gotta fill stuff.
I dropped her nail. I only drop things when I'm wearing my belt and can't find over. I have some reference materials for the stuff I'll be talking about. If you don't mind me bringing it up for you.
Nope, that'll be great.
Oh, you brought the library.
Brought the library. Me and the printer had a fight. It was supposed to be front and back, but it did not work out.
Thank you. First up on the agenda, we got Andrew with a, a departmental update.
Yeah, so, uh, we are doing fairly well, staying full here right now. Um, shortly after I talked to Don this morning, we actually ended up booking one more in. So, uh, current grand total of inmates is forty-three. Um, four male, or forty males, three females, forty of them are here, three of them are shipped out to Delaware County. Uh, those three being females, uh, twelve-person pod, we had three females tying up the twelve-person pod. Uh, so physically made more sense for us to ship out those three females and take in additional males to fill up the pod. Um, so yeah, currently we are sitting at forty, again, eighty percent are full of a fifty bed jail. We're at that capacity of full.
So technically, yeah, I was gonna say we're full.
Yeah, yeah, technically we are full. Um, so with that, we actually had a high of forty-four inmates, was a, uh, on new all-time high for us, uh, back in June. Uh, average daily population in June was thirty-one point seven-three, um, got kind of lower during the middle of the month and then picked back up. So June housing for Scott County was twenty-eight thousand fifty dollars. Uh, so our fiscal year total for twenty-four, twenty-five, figuring on the housing was a hundred sixty thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Of that, a hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty has been deposited. Um, what hasn't been deposited yet is what's going to build to Scott County this month. Um, expenditures overall, then housing out was a total of six hundred and fifty dollars Delaware County this month. Total of fifty-nine bookings this month, uh, so a little bit heavier month there. Uh, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight documented checks of inmates, eight thousand, seven hundred and fourteen specific logs of inmates. And two thousand, five hundred and twenty-three meals, uh, were prepared and served. Um, so one thing to note that's kind of, uh, um, that's really a ballpark, but a, an accomplishment. Um, our revenue brought in now exceeds what was expended during sheriff's first term on housing out. So we've actually made more in a six-month span than we spent housing out for four years. Um, so it's kind of a, a landmark in terms of what we're bringing in in revenue. Um, and so far here into July has been a very, uh, full month. You know, at the weekend of July at this point, um, our revenue right now is looking at eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, uh, fifteen hundred out. So we're looking at a little over ten thousand dollars right now, revenue just so far into July. So, uh, good month so far and hopefully that can keep steady for us.
Cool. It's good to see these numbers cuz I know in the last year's budget, we, I think we budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand is what, what we're kind of anticipating in revenue coming in, if I remember right, last year.
FY twenty-five?
Yeah. Um, we didn't get to open when we were hoping to.
Right.
So, but that number holds true with six months, we're a hundred and sixty thousand, you know, billed. So we, that's a, that's a realistic number to see. That's a nice expectation going forward if things keep going. That could be a legit, cuz I think in this next budget, this current budget, third, twenty-six, didn't we cut that back a little bit?
Yes.
So that, that's even a bigger bonus, so.
Yeah, and obviously, you know, if we can exceed what we were anticipating, that's great and we'd much rather do that than fall under. So I'm hoping that's how it keeps going, trajectory keeps up in a positive way and we can keep bringing in that revenue.
And I know we talked about with the revenue, um, you know, fifty percent is set aside for debt reduction, fifty percent is set aside for capital improvement kind of thing. But Nen, a couple of weeks ago brought up a good point in the fact that we're expending a lot more stuff, supplies, money out of our current departmental budget for this. That maybe we should reallocate some of those funds to reimburse back for these, you know, contract employee, you know, contract prisoners that come in.
Sure.
To kind of have cushion the budget, so it isn't just the taxpayers paying for it. You know, maybe some of this can go back into, set that off, so that's something we can look at.
Perfect. And I do have spreadsheets and stuff showing estimated totals. Um, the thing I haven't gotten too in-depth on yet is, you know, obviously certain bills go up based on that. You know, uh, your gas is gonna go up based on the hot water, that kind of thing. So to a point, some of that's hard to estimate. Um, food, we did, uh, evaluation on that here recently. Uh, total comes about nine dollars and seven cents on average per inmate per day for food, which is actually a little bit higher than I thought it was. Uh, now, what we have experienced here recently with, uh, uptake of Scott County inmates is, um, claiming religious diets if they can't have pork. Um, so we're looking to kind of replace some of the things that we have that do have pork to non-pork. Might cost a little more to the point, maybe saying ten dollars a day for inmates for food. Um, unfortunately, it's the point where special diets get hard to manage when you have too many of them. Um, you might have someone that's diabetic, you might have someone that's, uh, you know, allergic to peanut butter, you might have someone allergic to fish, you might have this. So obviously we can't, um, you know, make a menu that's gonna be allergy-proof, religion, you know, requirement-proof. Uh, but we try to do as much as we can to cut that down, the special diet. Um, some of the stuff as far as like kosher gets to the extreme of where, you know, you're, what you're preparing the food on is not supposed to have touched pork, that kind of a thing. So it's very, it can get very sticky, so I think just eliminating pork is, um, our best bet there. As I said, it may cost a little bit more, not much, but so I'm gonna say probably about ten dollars a day is what we're running as meals.
When they claim food allergies and peanut butter and all that stuff, are these documented actually at a medical facility documented allergies? Or is that just somebody that can say?
For them to be a pain. Yeah, for the most part, as long as it's, yeah, not total ridiculous, we accommodate it just on the fact that we don't wanna be responsible for some sort of food allergy when they occur around and say. I had allergic reaction cuz I didn't treat it serious. Um, so the, for the most part, we try to treat it as serious unless there's a reason to believe it's not. Um, and, you know, we've had alternatives too in the past that are very, very close to what it is. For example, we had some that he basically said he doesn't like fish and then said he was allergic to it. So I went out to Walmart and got, it was F apostrophe S H, a plant-based fish alternative, you know, so he's still getting the fish without it being fish.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so sometimes stuff like that, being able to, okay, well, here's the alternative, but you're still getting the same thing. It's kind of the answer to that where suddenly then they're maybe not so allergic. Um, but we don't actually take them in to get tested for it or anything like that, just cuz it probably costs us more in the long run to do that. So we accommodate it unless there's a reason to really truly believe it's not legitimate.
Good.
Um, and then hygiene supplies and stuff too, I calculated that out. We're looking, it's about four dollars a week for hygiene supplies for an inmate. So, um, I, I'm gonna guess like it's probably about fifteen dollars a day cost per inmate would be the most realistic number I have right now, but I can further that out if you guys would like.
You said hygiene probably is four dollars a week.
Four dollars a week. Um, now, if we have someone that gets here for a day and they're released, it's individual things. We don't reuse them, so that person might have been four dollars for the week. But in general, if someone's here an entire week, it's four dollars a week, so. Um, otherwise, water isn't overly expensive per inmate. I would say that was around forty-three cents a day per inmate based on, in April. In April to May um population.
You're talking about water usage.
Water usage, yeah, so. So like I said, I, I would think kind of that fifteen-dollar range is probably approximately what it is, um but I do have. Some actual hard numbers I can give you and some hard numbers I can finish developing too.
That's fine.
Um so then with that, uh. I would also be looking to get the board's approval to purchase a three-door reach-in cooler. Uh from Rapids, out of Cedar Rapids, uh where we purchased our other uh appliances at. What we've run into, um being more full is we just don't have enough room in cooler that we have. The air circulation isn't able to be enough, so we're running into a lot of milk that's spoiling, even though it's not expired yet. Um because there's just not enough room to spread it out, it comes in boxes. Um so the airflow is just not reaching how it should, so we're having a lot of food spoilage. Um Sarah Knight, who handles a lot of our food ordering, a lot of our kitchen stuff. She is very good about getting a hold of Cisco, you know, when we are having spoilage and saying, hey, this is spoiled before expiration. Um so we are trying to do what we can to help mitigate the cost budget-wise of food spoilage. But uh I think ultimately we could cut down on a lot of the spoilage with another larger cooler, uh to allow the air to circulate. Uh unfortunately, what we have just isn't really sufficient for the population we have. Um as explained to Don earlier, you know, Delaware County, one thing that is much different with their kitchen. Their kitchen is about the same size as ours, but then they have another area about the size of the mechanical room connected to that, that's all food storage. Uh which we don't have. At the time, you know, going back on it, I don't think we realized how much less storage we had. Um but again, looking at twenty-eight bed jail up to fifty. That two-door cooler we have was probably sufficient with twenty-eight, but as we get higher numbers, it's just not working.
Are you adding to the one we have, or are you replacing it?
We're adding to what we have.
You got room for it?
We do, yeah.
That was the main reason I stopped this morning is to see where you're gonna put it.
Right, yeah.
Is, is Delaware County, do they um source out their?
They do, yeah, yeah, they source theirs out. And, and I think we're at a point where we're reasonably able to do it ourselves. Uh it, it can be time consuming, I think we can still manage ourselves with that. Um significantly cheaper doing it ourselves than uh sourcing it out. Um and then the other thing we're running into too is like produce is starting to get kind of moldy and stuff, we think maybe putting it in a refrigerator uh would help. With that, and it also avoids that single point of failure, if one of the refrigerators would go down on us. You know, we can combine, we can try to mitigate the loss for losing all of the food in that refrigerator, um which is not cheap.
So it's like Cisco, you buy a lot of the stuff from Cisco, or you go to Walmart, Fairways, local?
The most we do is Cisco, uh and the reason for that is just the volume.
And do they deliver more than once a week, or do they deliver weekly or monthly, that's it?
Yeah.
So when they deliver weekly, is that throughout the whole town?
Uh that I don't know for sure, I think we get like a six-dollar fuel charge.
Yeah.
So I would assume there are probably other areas uh in town if they're charging a six bucks, I don't think they're probably making a special trip.
The one thing I would say, you know, if we get this freezer is, we talked about, you were talking about circulation with the milk, it's a big. You know, when I was there this morning, the ones that we stacked the milk is just very big open where you stack it on top of each other. Would you put shelving unit or shelves back in that side so you could. Space the milk out a little bit more, so you would be able to kind of ensure that circulation a little bit better?
Absolutely, yeah, and that's, we had to take the shelves out because we didn't have enough space. And the shelves were leaving like empty space for us, so that's why we took the shelves out, uh but in this new one, we would leave the shelves in. With the idea of allowing that circulation.
And when I was there this morning, looking at the space, it was gonna be kind of tight, then we walked into the mechanical room. And there's a fairly large section of a wall where some of that, they got one freezer out in the Sallyport. And we talked about maybe one of the freezers, one of the refrigerators, and that freezer getting put in the mechanical room just to kind of. Free up space instead of trying to cram it inside the, inside the kitchen, just so, because you don't wanna make that almost so congested, it's inoperable, so.
And that mechanical room too, as I found out, um when we were looking at that, it's much cooler than the Sallyport, so that'll help too with keeping the food. Yeah, so. Yeah, so um like I said, the reason I selected this one was just because it's the same brand, the same company we've been working with. Uh the cooler itself works just fine, it's just a matter of it's, you know, too full. Um and likewise, you know, if we need servicing, something like that, it's all kept through the same company's streams.
Oh, I don't know that there's a question that we don't agree with that, but is it, the question to me is, can we do other capital improvement funds? Or can we, or does it have to be something that funded it, or?
That was the question that Shelley proposed.
Uh can we do that?
I mean, what was the intent of the capital improvement fund to begin?
To obviously such.
Enhance the jail.
Then there's your answer.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I would make that motion to do that.
I would second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Lynn to approve the purchase of a three-door commercial reach-in cooler at the cost of. Six thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-three cents from Rapid City Wholesale with um any other discussion? When would you guys fly?
Um I can contact them today and get it going.
Okay.
For that.
They can invoice so we can pay it and all that kind of stuff, so.
Sounds good.
Any other discussion? Follow your favorite say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And would I just have Kim submit that through the claims or do I bring that over to you guys?
She can send it.
Okay, sounds good. Um I guess that's all I had in terms of my update for this month, unless you guys had any questions. Um so then I'll kind of move over to Virginia here a little bit, uh so she recently attended a. A symposium talking about um kind of opioid use disorder. Um treating it and kind of what's becoming required, um both state and federal, um so I'll let her kind of talk about that a little bit.
There is, um obviously a statement with it, we don't wanna give drugs to addicts, um however, at this point. Um the reason I wanted to speak with you guys today is because there is a substantial amount of case law. That is supporting this to the point where at this point, if we were to get sued for denying medication, uh maintenance medications to the inmates. We would have a lawsuit on our hands that we would not win. Um and there, I've, I've included in your packet a bunch of case law you can look up if you'd like. Um I also have some information for you uh regarding opioid withdrawal, um if that's something that's new to you. Um and then the guidelines for um the medical treatment for substance use disorders. Um there's some perceived. Obviously reasons we, we wouldn't wanna do that.
What M O U D stands for?
It is uh medications for opioid use disorder.
I think you used to hear the term mad medication-assisted treatment, it's just one of those things that the title changes, but it's essentially the same thing. And so what we're looking to do with it is to, um you know, obviously. Meet our legal requirements, that's what we need to do for treating inmates, um maintaining those medications. So that we keep ourselves out of trouble, don't get ourselves sued for not meeting those requirements.
Um make sure we have protocols established, so in the future, we're all on the same page.
I, I, you lost me a little bit there, Jenny. You were promoting the Narcan type thing, or not promoting the Narcan type thing, or?
Well, Narcan would be part of it, um but it's more the methadone, the bu- uh bufo- goodness, I knew I was gonna do that.
Some big medical.
Yes.
You do wanna use it or don't wanna use it?
We will have to.
You will have to use it, so I went through this before with, with Ms. Fern. Um you know, I'm not really, it seems like we're defeating our purpose by having these products available, so. Go ahead and take these opioids and then we'll fix it with another drug.
Well, and I understand.
Maybe it's a vicious circle to say, you know, and, and, and comments were made and I, I was upset by what some of the comments and I. Uh again, I, I, I'm not, nobody put in a box on every corner, so we can go to the.
Well, I don't wanna do that either, this will be, this will be basically for people who are already in withdrawal and on the medications, if we take the medications away, it could.
They're seeking treatment to try to, already seeking treatment to try to get off of.
Right.
opioid addiction.
Right.
So they're attending a clinic someplace to get their methadone or whatever.
Right.
Already, they come into our jail, we don't want to pull turkey, stop them from getting their methadone.
Right.
So obviously, we don't care before they get out, so there's a follow-up, but that then?
Well, okay, so that is another option we have, is telehealth versus the via University of Iowa. Um to follow up and kind of maintain, and again, there is case law that is, it's basically. Making it so it has to be done. We're compliant.
What's that, Brent?
Could I, sorry, could I jump in here? This is the program that I went to the FBI Academy a couple of years back, where all the sheriffs from the East Coast were. They were surprised that we didn't have to do this already, because it was, if you compare it to like um. Like a diabetic getting insulin. Um that's what they're, they're saying, basically the reasoning behind it is, is you can't put a diabetic in a jail and then take away their insulin, because. They'll be very likely to die, I mean, that's a medication they need. Um I'm with you, Mike, when I first heard about it, I thought this was crazy, I'm like, there's no way I'm doing that. Um but, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, because I, I, I won't have as much detailed information as you do. But the stuff they get in the jail is not the same as the drug, the opioid, it is. I don't know if fake is the right word, but it's a.
It's a synthetic.
Similar, it's similar, but it is to steer them off of the drug, isn't it, Jenny? So, for example, if they were in the jail for a certain amount of time. Essentially, they could leave the jail with not having the desire to have that drug when they leave at that time.
Right, and it does, it reduces the um. The frequent flyers that we would have, it would, it, it raises their um success rate for not revisiting some.
Understand. So, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a rehab program that.
Is this something that you frequently have, people on these narc, methadones and stuff in your jail?
It, it's not all the time, oh however, um this is just something we've learned about also, so it's not something that's very frequent at this time. But I have a, I have a feeling, especially now that we're getting people in from Scott County, we're seeing it a lot more.
Okay, so the real question is here, can we use opioid money for this, is that what you're asking?
That is what I'm asking.
And have we run this, have you run this past Julie?
Uh Julie and I went to the symposium together, yes.
So what, what's her stance on that?
Her stance is the same as mine, I mean, the case law is supporting it, if we don't, we are, we are gonna get ourselves in some legal trouble, we have to provide this information.
Will they come in with the methadone or the bufo?
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever.
Yeah.
They have a prescription?
A lot of times they will, yes, but if they are, obviously, if they're not in really good shape and they see. Like our telehealth or, and it's prescribed to them at that time, we have to honor that.
I don't know how we could legally. Deny somebody with a prescription, if they are prescribed these medications, we have to provide. Um so if they, so I, this is where I know she talks about, and I got the Schedule A. Things and seventy-five percent of our money has to be spent on the Schedule A thing, expanding treatment, you know, things like that. And then nal- naloxone or whatever, to reduce opioid overdoses, I mean, I'm sure treatment from. One of the Schedule A things is treatment for incarcerated populations, setting up space for the treatments and, you know, so. I think there's a, a very easy correlation to kind of help come up with a program. Whether it be a contract service, if we have somebody here where they come in and have to be kind of monitored, tracked, where they gotta report in. So it can be tracked, because I don't think that's something that should fall on you guys to take, take care of and manage, we should have a. I don't know, she, I know Julie talked at one point about it, you know, like a mobile. You know, ma- treatment, wherever with it, you know, if we have somebody that falls into this category. They have to be seen by and tracked by a certified licensed credential person. Instead of just a, a general, not saying you guys can't do it, but legally, I don't want you guys to have that liability.
Right, and we, I mean, I have a very small scope, I'm, I'm just an EMT.
Right.
I'm handling, kind of getting protocols in order for the new facility.
Mm-hmm.
Um but yeah, I, I mean, treatment is not going to be something I can even.
Yeah.
And you are an EMT.
I am just an. Thank you for that, I appreciate it, I just had my seven years in kind of round.
Nice.
And, and, and what we're looking for today is more just to kind of tell you guys, hey, this is what we're looking, we're probably gonna have to do. Uh this is why we think we're probably gonna have to do it. Um I don't think costs by any means will be astronomical, but kind of at least tell you guys. This is something we probably have to work in the way of, um it's coming. And, and there's a difference between Narcan is kind of that uh reversal agent, so if I overdose on some sort of opiate. Narcan is kind of what reverses that um overdose. These medications are, they are opiates in themselves, uh that are. Designed to be very hard for somebody to get high off of, they're designed to be able to be used in a treatment setting.
Mm-hmm.
Um to try to kind of help basically satisfy the body's needs, so it's not desiring to go out and get high. Um because especially opiates more so than any other drug. If someone's addicted to that, it's to where your body thinks it needs it like it needs air, food, that kind of a thing. These drugs essentially satisfy that need to the body. To where the person doesn't need to go out get high, think they need to go get high, it's basically just stabilizing that person.
Um there is a, a graph here, it kind of explains the versus, it's, this is them on the drugs. And this just, it's just a maintenance, so it keeps them from the lows and the really highs, they're not gonna get high of it. Um buprenorphine alone is, or is a, it has a ceiling, so they won't be able to overdose on it and stuff like that. Um so it's been, it's pretty widely used at this point, from what I understand, as a maintenance drug.
And these have improved over time, too, I remember ten, twelve years ago, we had a guy that uh was on methadone, we had to continue him on it. Um and we actually had to take him up to a clinic in Galena every single day to get this except on the weekends. Now, um with the buprenorphine, uh Suboxone, those kind of a thing. Uh it's gotten to where it's much more manageable, much more easy to get, um less easy to abuse. So they've come a long way in that, where it's much more accessible and much easier to do than it ever used to be.
And it's also easier for us as a jail to manage. Uh as far as uh diversion, medication diversion by the inmates, stuff like that, we can, we can keep a better eye on it.
Yeah, I would, I would say methamphetamine is probably our most common uh drug of abuse when they come into jail. Um we either know they're on it based on intelligence or they even self-admit it. Um and I realize this might be kind of oversimplifying it, but like, say, for example, when I'm trying to quit drinking Pepsi. I might start drinking Sprite or Seven Up, something that has carbonation but not the caffeine. So I kind of trick myself a little bit into not needing that anymore. Um and that's, my understanding is, that's what this stuff does, is it, it uh, it doesn't give them the high. But it kind of defeats the crave that they have, if, if that makes sense, am I talking right, Jenny?
Yeah, yeah.
To see what kind of program you guys can establish and, and, and what it, what it would entail and bring it to us, and we can go from there.
I like this whole idea a lot better than other things that I've heard, using those funds for.
Can I ask a good question?
Sure.
So the question is, is are you asking to buy? A, a drug, a prescribed drug, or are you asking for, to be reimbursed for a salary for someone?
We, I, I don't, I don't know the exact details of that at the moment, I guess, we're gonna. More than anything, we want to make the board aware that we're looking into this, that it's coming down the tracks, you know, and. This is kind of why we're looking into it.
I guess the program I would like to see come before us isn't buying drugs to have on hand in case somebody needs to.
Right, right.
Whatever, I would like to program with some other person that can take that legal responsibility of managing. These people off the corrections officer's hands.
And that's.
As somebody that comes in and they see them individually and monitor, track. Kind of regiment the care, so you guys are not legally, legally responsible for making sure they got it, make sure they didn't get it, make sure they didn't get too much. All of that kind of stuff, I don't want that responsibility falling on you guys personally.
Not.
Don, and that would probably ensure uh the most uh, the recidivism, the most uh successful. Insurance of them not coming back in, now, we can't control them, every day they go back out in society, but at least when they leave. Hopefully ensure that they're beyond that craving, they don't have to have it anymore, if they go to choose to do it, I guess we can't control that. But at least where, if it be, if we could get a program that's monitored by, you know, someone who does this. They would know the data and know the, the best way to uh ensure that maybe they wouldn't uh. You, you know, redo it again and come back, so, sorry.
Well, and when they do get discharged or released, whatever, that. They have the inside of staying on their treatment then.
Yeah.
Right. You know, and we can provide. If it's an outside agency that, okay, now we'll follow you outside of the correctional facility.
Right.
To keep you going here and hopefully that'll.
And maybe this could be the first step in that, because I'll be honest with you, that's. And maybe this could be the first step in that, because I'll be honest with you, that's, that's the biggest problem probably any jail has is. When somebody comes in, they can get cleaned up, if they're in there for six months, they can get cleaned up, they can be in their right mind when they leave, if they have mental health problems. They can be on the medications they need, when they go out the door, the bridge is too far, there's just nobody there to. You know, take them and keep them on the right path, so then we see them again, and it's usually over and over again, but. That's a bigger topic, I don't wanna derail the conversation, but totally agree with you, then. Um, that's really what's needed is something to, you know, then the next step is get them a job, the next step is this, you know what I mean, it just. It's getting them back on the right course in life, so.
Get it, but you know, somewhere along the line, there has to be some self-responsibility here.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
You know.
But if this can be a step to help get that direction, I mean, obviously.
Yeah.
Don't wanna hire people that are on the drugs and whatever, because.
Well, and to that note, I mean, we can lead a horse to water, we can try to provide them with the, the best we can, you know, exactly.
They gotta want it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Iroquois County has it, um, has the Mood, um, initiative implemented, and, um, the sheriff there, I talked with him at the symposium. Super nice guy, has all sorts of ideas, and it's, it's really improved just his community, and, as well as, you know, his jail and. He, it's, he's, you know, reduced number of people coming back, and, I mean, he has it implemented, so. And we're trying, we're compiling everything now here, kinda get something in place for us, and see if we can do it via telehealth or. You know, we, we wanna be fiscally responsible, so.
So this is just information, you're not asking for anything, right?
Nothing today, I just wanna kinda, you know, introduce it to you and, and ask for your help maybe later on.
I think we's. Together and.
Keep us updated, I.
Yeah, thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Yep, keep up the good work, and, you know, you running laps, Sarah Kilberg, or what's going on?
Yeah, pretty close, not quite there yet, but. I may have been told to slow down a little bit, so.
Well, thank you very much, everybody, we appreciate it.
We're just surprised he wasn't back in the office the next day.
That recliner, put it in his office, it looks like you might be able to be there, huh?
Wife might drop me off.
Well, thank you much, guys.
Uh, Lisa, you're up.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the July first, twenty twenty-five board proceedings, as written by Otter Smith, and authorize publication of the official newspapers.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike, to approve minutes of the July first, twenty twenty-five meet. Meeting of board proceedings is written by Otter Smith, and authorized publication of the official newspapers, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the, motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants of the publication of the claims listing the amount of nine hundred and nine thousand. Three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and two cents.
So moved.
Second, swallowing heart.
Yeah.
Hey Brett, your camera's still on.
Don't stand up if you.
We got a motion. What's that?
Are we having a work session at ten about, um?
Dispatch.
Dispatch.
Yeah. So, alright.
I might rejoin for that.
Okay, just wanna let you know, your, your camera's still on.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
Alright, uh, we had a motion by Nin, second by Mike, to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants and the publication of claims listing an amount of nine hundred and nine thousand. Three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and two cents, and yes, that does seem like a, a big number, and six hundred and eighty-some thousand of it was with, uh. Um, secondary roads and the county engineers, but there was some fifty thousand in cracked ceiling, there was some twenty-three thousand in design work for the Chennaworth Bridge. Hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment to finish, there was a second payment for the Monmouth Road. Seventy-eight thousand in bridge supplies, the steel that, you know, we contracted, improved. Hundred and seventy-one thousand in pavement markings, fifty thousand for rock, forty-six thousand in bridge. Uh, wood planking and things like that, and plus there's a lot of beings, the new fiscal year, there was a lot of. You know, contracts and subscriptions and things that needed to be paid, so, um, a lot, but nothing out of the ordinary.
Improvements.
In improvement, so, um, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Um, so we just got done talking about some opioid funds. I did receive, and I did give you a copy of a potential new, uh, settlement agreement with another company. Concerning the opioid funds, and we have to opt-in, so, so to speak, if we want to participate in this. So, if this is something that the board would like me to, to, uh, sign paperwork for, I would need a motion to approve the auditor signing the. Opt-in paperwork to participate in a new national opioid settlement agreement with Purdue Pharma LP and Sackler Family.
So moved.
I'd second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin, to approve the auditor signing the opt-in paperwork to participate in the new national opioid settlement agreement. With Purdue Pharma LP and the Sackler Family, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That's all we're gonna have for the board today.
Luane?
Good morning. We just stopped momentarily anyway. Okay, calendar for this week. Um, tomorrow, July ninth, at nine AM is Mike's turn on the Just Talk Show. At one PM, um, is a zero to five and sixty minutes meeting, a family advisory committee meeting. Um, by Zoom for Nin. Um, at four o'clock is the, tentatively, Jackson County Veterans Affairs Commission meeting in the community room for any of you. And also at four o'clock is tentatively the Ports of Eastern Iowa meeting by Zoom by, and I haven't received confirmation on either of those yet. Thursday, July tenth, at eleven AM, is a Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO meeting, um, a merger discussion. By Zoom for Don. And also at eleven AM is a Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting by Zoom for any of you.
We have not seen any information on that yet either, right?
Yes, we do have it.
I, I see one from the line, yeah, was the Zoom on there too, or?
Haven't received that yet. Um, at six o'clock Thursday night, um, I tend to have a, uh, Limestone Bluffs R C and D meeting by Zoom for Don.
They canceled that for July, so there's no.
They did cancel that, okay, alright, thank you. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July fifteenth, at nine AM. Um, in that afternoon, at twelve thirty, I have a safety committee meeting in the community room for Nin. And at five o'clock that night is tentatively a conservation board meeting, for any that wanna attend that. The only, go ahead.
Uh, did I, was I reading, Historical Society has their annual meeting on Thursday evening, is that correct? They have a special program, and I think it's their annual.
Their annual meeting?
Yeah.
I think it was on Facebook, so I'll look that up. Um, the only other visit I had was what Don was talking about with the workforce, um, development regions. I think you've already discussed that, so. Is there any other action to be taken on that at this point or not?
Well, I just wanna make sure, you know, they were asking, uh, basically in a nutshell, what it is of Mississippi Valley Workforce Development. Um, the budget cuts coming down the pipe are relatively, I think nineteen percent for us and seventy percent for, uh. Um, South Central Iowa, um, workforce development, and with that, it's getting really hard to maintain services. So they're talking about trying to combine into one district, and they've also extended, um, Northeast Iowa. Workforce Development has also expressed some interest, if I understand it, right, to joining us into one great bay. And we are going to reach out to East Central Iowa Workforce Development, because we would basically form a donut around them if the three of our. Groups combine, um. And what they're trying to do with all these cuts, it's getting harder to provide services, so if, if we combine. We can set up our board, we can maintain who's on the board, we can kinda have more local control. Um, the western side, the, the map that's provided, um, the western side, the Iowa Plains Workforce Development. The, the west side of Iowa basically said they're not playing, they did this several years ago, and so now it's controlled by the state. Uh, the state dictates the boards and appointees and all that kinda stuff and services, and those counties. Literally have no say on what, what's going on, or how the money is spent, or where the money is spent. So this is an effort to at least prolong us having more local control over our part of the state. And so the ultimate desire would be to join all four of those into one great big workforce development. Um, group, and so what they're looking for is support from, for this to happen, and it seems like a far shot is. Each county, so, right now initially, at minimum, Mississippi Valley Workforce Development and South Central Iowa Workforce Development wanna join. At, we are asking the other two to join, so worst case scenario is just the two join, best case scenario is all four join, but for that to happen. Every county needs to give support that they want this to happen. If one county in a particular district says no, that whole district is out. And if that happens, they're probably gonna have to lose their workforce development, it'll go back to the state. So right now, they're asking for each county to give kind of like a, a, uh, a, a motion of support. To say, yes, you're in favor of at least talking to pursuing the, the consol- consolidation of the districts, so that's what they are looking for. And I, I would be in favor of it, because again, it, it helps us maintain our boards on who's on them and who's not, and control of the money therefore.
Well, it gives us, uh, somewhat representation, I mean, I would, I would support a blessing to say, yeah, to move forward somehow until we. Know the total parameters, you're talking one, two, three, four districts, what about the central?
That one was not mentioned as of right now. So, this is basically.
Testimonies of that.
Right. They, they have their own, but right now, we're talking about the four on the east side of Iowa, um, trying, there is expressed interest in the three at least. Um, there is bylaw rules that says, um, right now, from what I understood in the last meeting, is Mississippi Valley, South Central and Northeast Iowa. All interested in trying to combine, um. We are asking East Central if they wanna join, because it's in the laws that says you can only join one that's next to you, you have to be adjoining. So if the three of us join, we form a donut around East Central Iowa, and if they choose not to join, they're on an island, they can't join anybody else. So it's either us, or they survive on their own, or they become. Run by the state, and so the goal is to get all four to join.
So you're supportive of this and what you've heard and what you've been into meetings?
From what I've heard right now, it is the best case scenario to make sure we on the east side of Iowa have continued representation for at least. Some of the future.
I'd make a motion to move forward and to participate?
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin, to support the investigation of the merging of the workforce development districts. From one up to four, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. It's cool, we have the meeting at eleven o'clock on Thursday, and I will pass it along, that we are in support. There is one county that is kind of, that they just want more, they wanna understand it a little better, and they can come and give presentations, and that's what we're looking for.
One county in our region, you mean, or one county, okay, so one county, uh. If there's six, seven, eight, nine, ten counties involved, one county can't stop it?
One county can stop it.
Or can the region stop it? You said one region could stop it.
Every county in each region, so let's say, uh, Mississippi Valley and Southeast say they wanna join. Every county in each of those dis- districts need to say yes.
Yeah.
If one county says no, in that region, somebody in Southeast Iowa says no, that region's out. Unless they change their mind, so right now, there's the PR campaign to get every county on board.
And just so I'm clear, your motion is to support the consolidation of the Northeast, the South Central, and the East Central into the Mississippi Valley?
It would become one, just to consolidate, not into, but just consolidate. Up to, it just, not, not those four, up to those four. It's either, uh, right now, the Southeast Iowa and Mississippi Valley are looking to consolidate, Northeast has expressed interest. And we're asking the East Central. We need a lot of things to fall in place to make that happen, but right now, a minimum of the Southeast. Um, so it's either to combine two or up to four. Of the districts.
South Central would.
Yes, South Central, excuse me.
Okay.
Alright, uh, you talked a little bit about nine one one, do you wanna add anything to that?
I'd add to your calendar today at one thirty, I have Security Advisory Committee.
That's the motion we did vote on, right?
Well, I thought we did.
We have did a motion.
Wednesday, or the night.
So Mike made a motion, and it's seconded by Nin.
And we voted, didn't we?
I think so.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Your microphone's still on.
Okay, kick the dog.
Alright, um, where's the commissions?
Um. So again, basically, you know, I, I, I mean, I said, I informed you guys of what was going on with the nine one one committee. And, and I, I forwarded that letter to you, so we're looking for our FPs to move the equipment out the water tower, basically. Because the, um, lines that are in the green space need to be buried. Now, you might have further information on that that I don't have, but, uh, also, oh, there's a. Property close to the water tower that is runs across or runs on private property, that needs to be, their lease is running out. And so they wanna eliminate all the expenses of burying, instead of burying from there. The water tower, uh, to the law center, to the dispatch, is to put all the equipment on the monopole right behind the dispatch.
Yeah, work the same?
Yes.
I'm just saying, there's a, there's a definite height disparity.
No, we've tested all that.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, we're looking, I mean, there's some discrepancy in the first estimate and. The last was an estimate, just an, a quote, I guess, it wasn't really a RFP, it wasn't, it wasn't an estimate, it was actually a quote, uh, off the call. So.
Alright.
Uh, they're working on the RFP, they're writing, writing the RFP, I guess, as you've seen and, and as you've seen.
I appreciate everybody tolerating my absence, I, you know. I, I had to phone it in last week, but if you ever get a chance to go Glashenac National Park, I highly recommend it, it's one of the most spectacular things I've ever seen, so. Um, with that being said, if we have nothing else. We just have the work session.
Yeah, we have the work session, but if there's no further business before the board, I make the motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin, to adjourn, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion cares.